I'm going to call the meeting to order this evening. And we're going to go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Eden, would you like to lead us with that?
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Here.
Mayor Bagby?
Present. And we have the report out of closed session.
Mayor, there were no referable actions taken by the council. Council did provide directions to staff.
All right, thank you. Any conflict of interest declarations this evening?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I will be recusing myself from Zone Number Two in the Item Number Five of New Business.
Gotcha, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'll be recusing myself under New Business, Lighting and Landscape Assessments for Zone One.
Thank you. So we're going to move on to public comments. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agenda during that item pursuant to the Brown Act. The City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must go to the podium when advised by the mayor and speak directly into the microphone. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes unless additional time is authorized by the mayor. Would anyone like to come forward at this time?
Good evening, Mayor Bagby, council members and staff. I sent a communication to Marta Cruz on April 11th, and I think it was omitted in the package. So, and I know she's been really busy, so...
Actually, she's just at risk of commenting, she's been out of the country.
Yeah, well...
So, yes.
That's pretty busy.
Yes, that's...
Yeah, yeah. So, anyway, I'd like to read it for the record, please, and then I'll give you a copy, okay?
Absolutely.
So it says, "Marta Cruz, Cloverdale City Council Members. Dear Councilmember Cruz, At the March 21st City Council and Planning Commission Joint Goal Setting Meeting, one of the subjects showing interest was providing licensing and permit information on our city's website. In my research, I came across the Oregon State website reporting just marijuana licenses and permits. However, I have taken that concept and applied it to our city website. My suggestions is to have Cloverdale report licenses and permits for all types of businesses received and approved. The Excel-attached spreadsheet serves as a simple example of my suggestion, and we may not need to show the license number. Our small town would not have a tremendous amount of licenses and permits, so I think it would require very little time updating. Please bring this suggestion to the next public city council meeting for discussion and any changes that would provide disclosure to residents. Also, please submit this correspondence to be included in the meeting packet. Respectfully, Shirley Davis." And then I have a spreadsheet, very, very, a very simple sample, okay? I think it's like five columns, and I have on there like a license for food permit, alcohol license, ag food permit, and then you have like a status of approved, or applied, or in progress. So I'd like to submit that, and I hope that you would consider that for our website. It's something that's really simple, and then I don't get all these questions at blank, like, "Well, so what happened to Black Bear?", you know, the restaurant? And I have no idea, you know? So the other things come up too, but I thought it would be nice if we could just put a little something out there and just let us know, like, how we're growing, and what businesses that we can look forward to, to go ahead and support. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. And you're going to give a copy of that to our clerk?
Yeah, I will.
Great, thank you. Okay. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time?
Hi, my name's Lamar Haas. I live at 203 Portofino. I'm, I was the participant of that mudslide, and I'm in the process of wanting to put the dirt in the front yard now, out in the street, and I told Mark Rincon was going to pick it up. And it'll be next week, but I'd like to start doing that. And I just wanted to let the council know that that's what I wanted to do. That's about all I have to say, so...
Well, thanks for reporting that, and I was there...
I want to start on a Monday?
Yep, and I was there, and I heard you, I was there at the time, and I heard him say that the city would take care of it, so maybe the city manager has a comment on that in Mark's absence, so...
Uh-huh, Mark's absent today?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Haas, for informing the city that you're intended to report with the debris removal, just for the benefit of the council. This was brought forward as a discussion item with the Police Finance and Admin Police Subcommittee, at which time we shared with Mr. Haas that who was impacted, his residents, by the flooding event that we experienced here in the city of Cloverdale in late February. And in response to Mr. Haas's request, we agreed to remove the debris that was deposited in the backyard from mud flow that generated outside the city limits, but did impact our city streets and personal residents, and we agreed that we would, if we notified the city, that we would remove that material at the city's cost. So, we did obviously request advanced communication, provided that to us, and I'll ensure that we coordinate with our Public Works Department. I'd like to, if I could, Mr. Haas, just give you my card, and make sure that we continue in communication, so that our staff, our exec, and your executive, we can try to coordinate as closely in time as possible to get the debris removed from the streets.
I would like to start on it next, on next Monday. I was going to rent a little tractor, a little backyard tractor, to get it out of the backyard. It's all clean, sand, mud, gravel.
Right.
So...
So I think we'll be set...
There's no garbage in it, or all...
Sure. No, I think we'll be set, we just need to get you David's card, and he'll be able to coordinate with you on that.
And let you know exactly what's going on.
Yes, exactly. We want to make sure that the resource is available on Monday.
Okay. It might take me two days to do this, I don't know how long. It's a little tiny little thing, three feet, so it's, I don't know how long it's going to take me.
Thank you.
Great.
So, okay.
Yeah. That way you can coordinate the pickup date. Great, all right, thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? All right. Actually, thank you, thanks for coming. Eden, do you want to go ahead and do your report next with proclamations, and are you ready?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to move our student liaison up because she is double-booked. Go ahead.
Thank you. Tonight's portfolio night at the high school for seniors, and so I have to go present in a minute, but we have good news, both the softball team and baseball team made it to playoffs, and so they'll be doing that, and on May 17th at 7:00 PM, there will be a Cloverdale Benefit Concert, and the Healdsburg Community Band and the Cloverdale School Band will both be there at the East Gym at 7:00 PM on May 17th. There will also be an improv show from 7:00 to 8:00 PM on May 31st here at CPAC, and I was awarded the first prize for the Congressional Art Competition for our district, and so that's, the second year in a row Cloverdale has won the Congressional Art Competition for our voting district, so that's exciting news. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations, and I guess, congratulations, and I think you need to go on to your next event, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, so with that, we'll go to our next item, which is the proclamation making May 13th, 2019, Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Sonoma County Cloverdale Clubhouse Youth of the Year Day in Cloverdale. And do we have someone here to accept the proclamation from the Boys and Girls Club? Great. And city manager, would you like to read the proclamation for us, or?
Sure.
Great.
Welcome back, represented for the Boys and Girls Club to the podium. I'd like to read the following, and to the records, the City Council proclamation proclaiming May 13th, 2019, as the Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Sonoma County Cloverdale Clubhouse Youth of the Year Day in Cloverdale. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Central Sonoma County provide challenging, engaging, and fun learning experiences to help children and teenagers develop their social, emotional, physical, cultural, and academic skills, and whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Central Sonoma County support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after school and during summer, and whereas the Boys and Girls Club of Central Sonoma County builds stronger communities by involving our students, parents, business leaders, and volunteers in the lives of the young people, thereby promoting positive relationships among children, teenagers, families, and adults, and whereas every month, Boys and Girls Club of Central Sonoma County recognizes clubs named clubs in each of our core program areas, academic success, character and leadership, health and life skills, sports, fitness and recreation, and the arts, and whereas in April, May, each year, the Boys and Girls Club of Central Sonoma County acknowledges over 3,000 youth in Sonoma Marin County for deserving qualities such as leadership, good character, and responsibility, and whereas during these annual celebrations, the Boys and Girls Club of Central Sonoma County distinguishes club members in core areas and announces the Club of the Year, the Club Youth of the Year, and whereas being selected as the Club Youth of the Year is the highest honor of a club member's standing seat, and whereas the Cloverdale Youth of the Year Celebration will be held May 13th, 2019. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that Mayor Bagby, Melanie Bagby, and recreation, and recognition and support of the people and programs that are committed to the Boys and Girls Club of Central Sonoma County, Cloverdale, California, do hereby proclaim, May 13th, 2019, this Boys and Girls Club of Central Sonoma County Cloverdale Clubhouse Youth of the Year Day in Cloverdale, California.
To Mayor Bagby, and the rest of the council, we just want to say thank you so much for this proclamation, we really appreciate it, and thank you to Marta Cruz for helping coordinate this as well. Thank you all. Thank you. And due to an unforeseen event, Chris Bocade will not be able to join us this evening from Colini River Alliance, but we are going to reschedule him. Do we have a date for that yet?
Correct, Mayor, Mr. Bocade gave his warrant to city staff, and unfortunately was unable to make it tonight, and we agreed to work with Mr. Bocade to bring him back at the second meeting in June.
All right, great, thank you. And then we will move on to the consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless a council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Does anyone on the council like to have anything removed from, anyone from the public? And that would be Items Three and Number Four. All right, well, seeing none, do I have a motion?
A move approval.
One second.
All right. And may we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye. And communications. Looks like we have an email from Lori Pitonesse, Career Resource Coordinator at Kings Valley Senior Apartments, page 17. Okay. Do we know who it was, what it was regarding, and who it was addressed to?
The correspondence in the agenda package was requested to be placed in, for the council's review by Councilmember Cruz. There was no other policy direction or recommendation, just that it be provided as information.
Okay, great, thank you very much. All right, then we will, we have no public hearings, we're going to move on to New Business and Landscaping and Lighting Assessment Districts. Who would like to take that?
Mayor, I'll start, and I'd like to invite Paul Wade, who is our appointed engineer for the landscaping and lighting districts up, to speak to this matter. As the council did earlier, Vice Mayor Walter recused himself from discussions on Zone One, Councilmember Turner recused himself from discussions for Zone Two, and there are no conflicts of interest for Zones Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven. As such, the item tonight has been broken up into three resolutions to account and address for those conflicts of interest, and we just recommend we take those up as individual actions. And with that, I'll turn over to Paul to give you an overview of the preliminary engineer's report that was included in your packet. One thing that you want to note is, you can, there are really two options that are provided for you tonight, it's to adopt it in its current form, or if council so directs, you can make modifications to the report, and that's included as option two. Obviously, the additional option is if you decide not to proceed, you don't have to adopt the report tonight, but then that would not allow for, provide for future adoption assessments until such time that you adopt the engineer's report. So with that said, I'll turn it over to District Engineer Paul Wade.
Thank you.
Welcome back, Mr. Wade.
Thank you.
May I just ask, are you going to give an overview, and then do each of the items one at a time, so that the appropriate council member can recuse themselves? Are you going to do a summary up front?
Yeah, I'm going to give an overview, and then...
And then we'll break it up.
Allow for a public comment at your pleasure, and then answer any questions, and then we can consider the resolutions, so...
Great, one at a time?
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name's Paul Wade, I'm with Coastland Civil Engineering, it's good to be back. So just a little background, the city of Cloverdale's Landscape and Lighting Assessment District was initially formed in 1997 with the Jefferson Springs development. Other subdivisions were annexed over time, and there are now seven zones. The last one annexed was Sunrise Hills in fiscal year 2005, 2006, and that's Zone Seven. There hasn't been any further annexation since then. In accordance with the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972, the city must undertake certain annual proceedings each year in order to levy assessments in the upcoming fiscal year. These proceedings typically require three council meetings. At the first one, the council initiates the proceedings by appointing the engineer of work to prepare the annual engineer's report, and this year that took place at the meeting on February 27th. At the second meeting, that's tonight, the council typically adopts resolutions of intent to levy and collect assessments, and sets the date of the public hearing. At the third meeting, the council conducts the public hearing, and then adopts the resolutions authorizing and levying of the assessments, and that is proposed to he on June 12th, unless we change the schedule. So there are, a copy of the preliminary engineer's report for fiscal year 2019, '20 is attached to the staff report, and line item budgets for each of the zones are included in the report, that's on pages 15 through 21, and it also shows a comparison to last year's budgets on line by line. You should have received a copy of a budget review spreadsheet, and that spreadsheet shows the proposed budgets for each zone, and then the second or third column is the percentage changes from the prior year. For Zone One, Jefferson Springs, there is a decrease of 7.6 percent. Zone Two, Vintage Meadows, an increase of 31.6 percent. Zone Three, The Cottages, an increase of 5.7 percent. Zone Four, The Vineyards, an increase of 8.9 percent. Zone Five, Ioli Ranch, an increase of 2.2 percent. Zone Six, Brookside Terrace, an increase of 5.4 percent. And Zone Seven, Sunrise Hills, an increase of 30.4 percent. It's by understanding that some of the costs, the increase in costs are due to increased water costs, and also switching over to the use of organic herbicides. Additionally, there are some specific improvements planned for Zones Two and Seven, and we can come back to the budgets if the council has specific questions, and may refer some of those to staff to help prepare the budgets. Assessment increases are proposed for five of the seven zones, that's Zones Two, Four, Five, Six, and Seven. For Zones Four, Five, and Six, the proposed assessments are at the maximum allowed without balloting the homeowners. There is a built-in escalation that allows to increase without balloting, but those are proposed to hit right at the maximum they can be. You can see on the budget review worksheet the amounts of the current assessments, that's about the fifth column, and the proposed assessments, and then over in the, for the other sides, the amount of the increases. Specifically for Zone One, there's proposed to be no change in the assessment. For Zone Two, Vintage Meadows, an increase of $121.12. Zone Three, The Cottages, no change. Zone Four, Vineyards, an increase of $95.50. Zone Five, Ioli Ranch, an increase of $6.648. Zone Six, Brookside Terrace, an increase of $28.32. And Zone Seven, Sunrise Hills, an increase of $100.80. In 2011, the council established a policy of trying to maintain a minimum fund reserve balance of 25 percent of operating expenses for each zone. The last three columns on that spreadsheet show the anticipated beginning reserve balances at the end of the current fiscal year, the projected reserve balances at the end of fiscal year 2019, '20, and those reserves as percentages of each zone's operating budget. And Zones Four, Five, and Six are projected to end next fiscal year, reserves below the 25 percent target. Zones Five and Six are projected to have zero reserves. Just caveat, of course, that all assumes that expenditures and revenues match exactly, and we know from experience that they don't always do that. Three of the zones have general fund contributions to their budgets, that's Zones Two, Five, and Six. For Zones Five and Six, these are relatively minor amounts, $348 and $124 respectively, and those are necessary to balance their budgets, and as I said, were projected to have zero reserves at the end of that. For Zone Two, there's a general fund contribution of $13,709 to fund the general benefit proportion of Vintage Meadows Park that is conferred upon the community at large. I can go into that further if you want, but that was determined to be 23 percent by prior analysis last year, and that's discussed in Part D of the report. Note that all three of these zones will likely require ongoing general fund funding in the future, unless they're balloting to further increase assessments for Zones Five and Six, or if expenses can be reduced. Each of the zones has a built-in inflation adjustment to the maximum allowed assessment based on the Consumer Price Index. This year, the Consumer Price Index adjustment is 4.5 percent. Adjustments are shown at the bottom of each budget sheet in the report. Those move up regardless of whether the assessments are increased or not. And as discussed earlier, there are three resolutions to account for potential conflicts of interest. Zone One, Jefferson Springs, Zone Two, Vintage Meadows, and the last resolution, Zones Three through Seven. Happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, council, I also want to share with you that joining us tonight is our Parks and Landscape Maintenance Lead, Hector Galvin. Hector, in his Parks team, does the majority of the work within the Landscape and Lighting Districts, and he's here to answer any questions that the council may have about either the current activities within the Landscape and Lighting Districts, or the planned activities, and he'd be happy to address the council if you have any questions. So certainly feel welcome if you'd like to ask Hector or myself any questions about planned activities within the, in individual zones.
Great, thank you. Did you have any general questions for Mr. Wade at this point?
Well, I did specifically about Zone Three, The Cottages.
Why don't we hold off, and, yeah, and then, I just, maybe clarifying questions at this time? Anything clarifying?
I have a general question for Hector when the time is appropriate.
Okay, well, we'll hold that for when you're back on the dais probably, okay? Anything, right? Okay, great. Well, thank you, and actually, at this time, and I'm going to open it up to a public comment if anyone would like to come forward and speak on this item. And you'll have three minutes. Oh, yeah, please come down. And please state your name for the record.
Dan Bradchelani, I live at 123 Grape Gables. I have a long name, it's going to take me a second. Okay, so you have the budget for 2019, '20, and I hope you had a chance to look at it. There might be a couple of items you might have missed, and so I'd kind of like to address these things. It might take me one or two minutes extra, but I'll try and be real quick. The first thing I'd like to do is have you turn to page 50 and 56 in your budget, or your agenda package, and it should be the worksheet for Zone Two. Are we all there? Okay, and so if you look down under Total Expenses, it says, "Contributions from miscellaneous revenue allocation," and for 2019 and '20, it's zero. The primarily, primary reason for any money here is we get reimbursed from the city for employee pensions, and so it's kind of interesting that we have zero for 2019 and '20, but that number should be 5660. The reason I know that is if you turn to page 56, under Vintage Meadows, you'll see this is the calculation where they calculate our ending reserve, and under estimated miscellaneous revenue allocation is 5650. So if you put 5650 in that box, then if we look at the difference between the beginning and ending reserve, you'll see the ending is greater than the beginning. The difference there is 5160. So basically, you have to add 5160 to the reserve to make it come out to 23877. Turn back to page 50, and under Contribution from annual reserve, $500, well, I just told you, we have to add, we can't take away, so cross off the "from" and put 2 over there where it's 500, cross off 500, and put in 5160, and now this, the numbers add up. I like things to work out, okay? Okay, then the other thing is that, as stated by Paul, Zones Five and Six have zero reserve right now, and the general fund is contributing money to those zones. However, if you look at Zone Four, Zone Four on page 52, the assessment this year is 38912, and the maximum assessment is 38912. There's no more room for an increase in assessments except for the cost of living. Therefore, once the reserves in Four are used up, the city is going to have to contribute general fund, general reserve funds for that zone. Also, if you look at Zone Seven, the assessment this year is 470, the maximum is 473, you're $3 away from the maximum you can assess these homeowners, and so if you increase the assessments, the $3, and you use up all the reserve, you'll be contributing to that Zone Two. So in a year or so, you're going to be contributing possibly to four zones out of the seven. And then if you look at Zone Two, you're only $46 away from the maximum assessment there too. Now, Two has a very large reserve, but once that's all gone, you're probably going to be contributing to that too. And so out of the seven zones, in a few years, you might be contributing to five of them. So you might need to take a look at how you're going to, how you're going to do that. And so that's my presentation. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Would anyone else from the public like to come forward?
My name is John Moak at 310 Buckeye Circle, and I sort of like to tie in my comments to what Mr. Broccoli was talking about, specifically to The Cottages. I'm looking at the budget presented for the years 2019, '20, and by and large, most of the numbers sort of follow the earlier budget, or that budget from last year, except for water, that increased by $5,000. Now, I don't think, I haven't heard, that we're doing anything different to maintenance or planting, or anything in the open areas, so I'm just assuming now that this is water cost. Water cost is increasing by $5,000. Water cost is increasing by $5,000. That brings me back to my earlier presentations to the City Council about taking a look at what we do in these open areas in a different way. In other words, start with a blank sheet. In my view, there are too many plantings there. Things can be eliminated. It still could look nice, and what maintains should be very drought maintenance. You know, with that, we will save water, which is, looks now important. And we also save labor, and we are probably going to be saving on that very expensive herbicide we're talking about now that we're going to be using. So this is about the third time I've addressed this problem to the City Council. I have seen, as far as the maintenance of the areas, some improvements made. I've seen Hector and his crew out there, and some things have happened. What I'm looking for is maintaining what we have, take away some of the dead stuff that's there, but I'm not looking at all, and this is obviously my opinion, to plant anything new. Let's just see what we can do when we eliminate some stuff. There are some areas that need to be addressed that really don't look good. As a matter of fact, the corner of Pepperwood and Cloverdale Boulevard is looking bad. But I understand Hector's time problems that he has in addressing all the areas there. But when we go to these areas, I urge you to take a look at how we can do things differently, not plant new material, take some material out, make it look good, cap some water off, make some, you know, make sure that stuff grows there that is drought tolerant. And from what I can tell, then, you know, basically what we're after is saving some, you know, be more efficient on it and save some money so we don't have to look at these water increases or any other increases from year to year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward at this time? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to bring it back to the council. And actually, what is, what's your pleasure, Mr. Vice Mayor? Do you want to discuss it in general, and then go to each of the resolutions, or?
Well, Dan pointed out some things that I'm getting the impression he thinks are incorrect. And I'd like to-
Some clarification.
-clarification on that from Paul, whether we want to send this back and tackle it another day, or are the remarks that Dan made not correct?
So regarding the budget for Zone Two Vintage Meadows and the miscellaneous revenue allocation, that's the ad valorem tax, it's correct in the report. When I first saw it, I questioned it, too. I thought it looked odd. But it's, the reason there's, the ad valorem miscellaneous revenue contribution is shown on the summary sheets that show the beginning reserve and the estimated revenue, and then ending reserve miscellaneous revenue allocation. So what's happening is all of the miscellaneous revenue allocation is going into the reserve. And that's necessary so that we could achieve the 25% ending reserve balance. So it's accounted for, it's just not, it's just not contributing to the specific year budget.
So then it's the ad valorem that we're-
Yeah. Yeah. That's what the miscellaneous revenue allocations are.
So can you describe what it will look like in five years? Not tonight.
You know, the, our projections on the ending year fund balances, sometimes they're pretty good, and sometimes they move around a lot. At one point, I went back a few years ago to look at what we projected and how we did, and there was some hit and miss on those. For instance, last year, we were projecting Zone Two to have a, I believe it was Zone Two, hang on. Yeah, sorry, it was Zone Three, the cottages, to have at the end of this current fiscal year, a fund balance of 23%. And I believe Vice Mayor Walter actually asked me at the time, why aren't we increasing that, the assessment to get the 25? And I said, well, I'm kind of feeling like this is more of a, let's watch this one, it's pretty close to the 25%, see how we do. Well, the projected, now, year-end fund balance is, at the end of this fiscal year, is considerably higher than, it's higher than, I don't know if it's a percentage, but it's over, it's over the 37%. It's projected to be $40,000. I'm not taking credit for that, I just got lucky, I guess. But looking ahead, if I can talk a little bit about the reserve amounts, the 25% target that the council set, to account for unanticipated expenses throughout the year, and I think that's probably a pretty good number in general terms. What's happening this year in a couple of the zones is there is a larger expense. In the case of Sunrise Hills, it's resurfacing the paths within the wetlands area, and that's, you know, it's a necessary maintenance item, it's planned, but it's a larger expense, and it's beyond what a 25% reserve could account for. So, you know, if it would be possible to look, you know, like you do for a five-year CIP and look forward and say, oh, there's going to be some major expenses in each of these zones, and then start planning for that, you may want to revisit the 25% policy and say, hey, maybe we ought to start, change that policy now, and start trying to increase those reserves in anticipation of larger expenses. Just a suggestion, but to answer your immediate question, I can't look forward and tell you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry to answer your question.
No, that's it. The one that I was really concerned about was the cottages because of the significant change that we're seeing here, and them having a reserve of 37%.
Mayor, if I can just ask a question about our district here, relative to Mr. Barcellini's comment about the contribution from miscellaneous revenue allocation. Is it the case that if that was reflected in the 1920 budget, Paul, and not put in the reserves, it would have the effect, I would anticipate, of reducing the reserve, but also increasing the assessment? Is that-
So what it would do in order to make the budget sheet balance is, we are proposing an increase in the assessment there, we would reduce that, the amount of the proposed increase, because you can't increase the assessment and put the money directly into the reserve. The assessment has to go towards matching the expenses for the year. And if you reduce expenses over the year, or the ad valorem, that can go into the reserve. So that would, yes, it would have the net effect of reducing the reserves below 25% if we put that into the budget.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else have any general questions right now about the report, or? Okay, all right. Mr. Broccoli, would you like to go ahead and come forward and make another comment? Certainly.
Yeah, I'm sorry, but again, if you look at the budget sheet, it says Contribution from Annual Reserves, okay? There's no way that you can get any money out of the reserves, because the reserve, ending reserve is bigger than the starting. So you have to put money into the reserve. You can't take money out. So this $500, it just doesn't work.
Mr. Wade, would you like to address that?
Yes, thank you. The $500 is the contribution from the reserves to the budget. The reason that the reserve is getting, is ending larger is because of the miscellaneous revenue allocation.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You can't put that into the budget and then transfer it back out. It's just an accounting exercise.
And Finance Manager or Director, you concur. Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So what is the council's pleasure? Would you like to go ahead and take each one of these by item so that we can get you in and out?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from the first bullet on item number five, which is the Landscape and Lighting District for Zone Number One.
Great, thank you.
Are we still going to ask a question to Hector? Are we waiting for that?
You know what? Why don't you, why don't you wait? I'm sorry, I missed that. Yes, and Hector, would you come forward? A council member has a question for you.
Thank you, Hector. I appreciate it. Attended the lighting and landscape planning workshop at the Cloverdale Library, and that was the first I had heard you bring up some of the challenges that you're facing with the recent rulings with Monsanto and the city moving away from those types of products for weed abatement. For the sake of the public and the people watching at home, will you please give a high-level summary of the challenges you faced with that? Some of the things that jumped off your presentation to me was that, in previous years, you could accomplish what you needed to with one pass, and then what you're proposing is by testing some of the products moving forward, more than one pass might be required. So do you mind commenting on that a bit?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, City Council members and staff, yeah, one of the challenges that we face, me and my staff, of transitioning over to organic herbicides is the amount of applications that organic herbicides require. With just, for example, glyphosate Roundup, you can go through one district with one application and accomplish what you want to accomplish for that specific district. When it comes to organic herbicides, you need three or sometimes four applications. Although I support the transition to move over from organic herbicides, like our neighboring cities are doing, the biggest challenge is the amount of applications. Of course, the more applications that you have to apply, the more labor hours, you know, the more labor that it takes to accomplish, not the eradication of the weeds, but the suppression of the weeds. And that's going to be the biggest challenge for us going forward, having the staff, enough staff necessary to accomplish the job.
Great, thank you.
Do you believe that enough consideration was taken into the increased labor and material in the proposed budgets for the districts next year?
We're in the middle of, right now, we're with city staff, we're in the middle of working, in the middle of kind of putting the numbers together and come up and trying to come up with a solution that works good to be able to accomplish, you know, what we want to accomplish here with the amount of staff that we have. You know, there's more needs now in the parks, there's more responsibilities, and yeah, you know, any help would be, would be great.
Thank you for your time, Hector. I appreciate that.
Mayor, Council, if I can just weigh in and add to the points that Hector made, and thank you, Hector, for that point, because Hector and his team take great pride in the work that they perform within the Landscape and Lighting Districts. We also realize that there's a transition occurring with respect to moving away from your typical herbicides to organic herbicides for a number of reasons. You know, one of my big concerns is the health of our employees and ensuring that they're healthy. That comes, that transition comes with a cost. Hector did present me with the cost implications of this transition. And I also, I looked at that very carefully, and I tried to balance that cost, that cost increase with the financial impact to the community and the residents within the Landscape and Lighting Districts. And, you know, basically, working with Hector pared back some of the, what we anticipate would be the full need application of organic herbicides within those districts to ascertain how effective we are and will be. And that's something that was, is going to remain to be seen. So as we kind of move into this next year, it's really kind of, it's going to be a kind of a pilot year to see how effective we transition from the traditional herbicides that we use to organic herbicides, and, you know, and how that, those perform. And, you know, there are different, there are different products out there, and so it is kind of a pilot for us to see how well the, this change is going to, you know, how effective it's going to be within the districts in terms of abating the weeds. And, you know, there are ways to address that. One is to apply more labor, or apply more capital in terms of buying more organic herbicides. You know, those two kind of go hand in hand if you apply more, require more labor, which in turn is going to increase the amount of time expended in the districts and increase the assessments. Or you kind of wait and see how, what effect it's going to have, and what the expectations of the community are in terms of the look and feel of those particular landscape areas within the district. It may very well be that we come back next year and say, we need to apply this more often, or we need to utilize more labor time. But with that would come increased costs that, again, you know, residents, I know of a great concern about the impact of those assessments, you know, it could impact the amount, or increase the amount of those assessments. So, you know, we're going to this year with the understanding that it's going to be a wait and see, and see how effective we are with these, with these organic herbicides. But we think that there's good reason to do it, and we also recognize our partners in park and landscape maintenance are also making this transition. So it's, you know, we'll see how effective it is, and I know I will receive feedbacks from both the community and Hector on how well we are doing managing weeds as we make this transition. So would you want to share that with the council?
Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment?
I brought this up a little bit last year, too, but, and it's by no means what I think should happen, but I've gotten a few phone calls, and they've been in the cottages and vintage meadows. Both of them have a current year's budget of over $90,000. And those, a couple from vintage meadows and a couple from the cottages have asked, is there any way that we could actually form our own lighting and landscaping district? Because for that, we could actually hire two full-time people that would work only in those districts. And I said, you know, I don't have a clue. I don't know if that's even a possibility. Could you speak to that, Jose, or?
Actually, I floated that idea about the same time last year, that if we could cut them loose, we could cut them loose, but not sure if it's possible, so.
Well, that's what I'm curious.
The issue of having residents form their own Landscape and Lighting District, that usually see kind of like in a homeowners association-
It would be an HOA.
-or whatnot, HOA. At this point, it's, it's not like we could dissolve, I mean, this could get dissolved, but it's, there's no guarantee that it would come back. The residents would really have a choice of the HOA. Usually HOAs start off when developments start, right at the beginning.
Right.
It's kind of hard for the, for the city to be, kind of, we would need to partner up with the residents. Really, this is the only mechanism that the city has to ensure that the cost comes in. The HOAs, the cities, it's harder, it's harder to regulate that.
I just basically wanted the public to hear how confusing it could be.
It could definitely be confusing, and I get it. In every jurisdiction, sometimes the residents are saying, we could handle it as well, we could handle it better, or whatnot.
Right.
But really, the HOAs are usually what you see handle that, handle those types of maintenance.
So if they formed an HOA, at that point, can they take it over themselves?
The problem with having an organization form an HOA, let's say residents form an HOA, is that that's an independent, that's their HOA, that's not the city's HOA. So the city, if, what if the HOA went away? We couldn't bring back the Landscape and Lighting District, or at least it would be extremely difficult, because that would need a vote. And that's why you normally don't see cities let go of the Landscape and Lighting District once it's in.
Okay. Anybody else?
I guess just some general thoughts. I've spoken briefly with Hector about this issue, and I understand that the elimination of Roundup, I knew it was going to come at a cost, and that's one of the reasons that last year we budgeted and purchased the, what would you call the thing, the flame, I want to call it a flamethrower, but it's not really a flamethrower. It sounds, that sounds worse than it is.
It is kind of.
Madam Mayor, the torch, that's the water department built it and put it together. It wouldn't, that type of equipment wouldn't work for us, because we got to spray around, or we can't take it out around the landscape, so. It would, it works great for open spaces, and most of the weed abatement would have to take place in the wintertime.
There are obvious limitations to its use, yeah.
Right, because of the fire, because of the fire danger, so.
Right.
But yeah, water department seemed to have a lot of success with it.
There you go. So, and I-
So, and I, and I, you know, realize that the transition away from Roundup was, was going to cause an issue. And I think it sort of reminds me of the, you know, I'm with Mr. Moke on this, this topic, is that, you know, at one time, it would have been all grass and we would have watered it. And then we went to, you know, Russian River friendly landscaping or, you know, low-water landscaping. And it's probably time where we need to revisit our aesthetics and our standards and our practices again. And one of the things that I've been working on in the background and haven't had a chance to discuss with you, with you yet, is that, I mentioned this to the executive director at Russian River Watershed, and they have a very popular annual landscapers conference. It's a day-long program. It's actually usually standing room only, and it's very popular with the larger commercial operations and the municipalities. And so, and I mentioned that we were, we need to give you guys some tools to transition the practices and maybe like learn about best practices. And he put that right at the top of the list for the class next year and for some of the materials too. So I'm going to talk with the other electeds in the area, because everybody's got to be having this problem. I mean, I know it's you guys here in Cloverdale and you cover a lot of space, but then you think about the size of the city of Santa Rosa and their maintenance crews or the, you know, city of, everybody's facing this issue and looking for tools and solutions. So hopefully, we'll come up with some regional tools for you to use.
Thank you, thank you for looking into it. And, you know, I know it's, I don't know if it's the right setting to bring it up or not, but another challenge that we face is the acquisition of the open space, the Portofol Creek, which is 275 acres that was, that now the Parks Department is going to be responsible to maintain. And I'm just, I'm concerned of being able to, to accomplish all these new responsibilities in my department.
You should be.
Yeah, yeah, we're concerned too.
So just wanted to.
We'll work on that in another meeting though.
Right. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Great, all right. So at this time, I think I will split this up into the three different areas. You want to recuse yourselves then?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on a resolution?
Nope.
Okay, all right. Would someone like to offer the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 302019, a resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments, preliminarily approve the engineer's report for FY 201920 for the City of Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District, and set the time and date of the public hearing for Zone 1 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
I will second.
All right. May we have a roll call?
Councilwoman Brigham?
Yes.
Councilwoman Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to the next item, and I think, can you?
He has to recuse himself.
Go get Gus.
Okay, great.
And Mayor, just for the record, I know Councilmember Turner's recusing himself because of the location of his, of his home close within the 500 feet from the, from the district.
Right, okay. Great, you've got the next item. Any discussion on the next resolution?
No.
All right, seeing none? Does someone like to offer?
I'll offer the resolution by title only, City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 312019, a resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments, preliminarily approve the engineer's report for FY 201920 for the City of Cloverdale Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District, and setting the time and date of the public hearing for Zone 2 pursuant to the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972.
All right.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May we have a roll call?
Councilwoman Brigham?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
Jason?
Yes.
All right. And let the record show that Councilmember Turner has returned to the dais, and we will move on to the next resolution. Is there any discussion on this item?
No.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to offer the resolution by title only, City of Cloverdale City Council, Resolution Number 322019, a resolution of intent to levy and collect annual assessments, preliminarily approve the engineer's report for fiscal year 201920 for the City of Cloverdale Lighting and Landscape Assessment District, and setting the time and date of the public hearing for Zones 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 pursuant to the Landscape and Lighting Act of 1972.
I'll second.
All right. General call, please.
Councilwoman Brigham?
Aye.
Councilwoman Turner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Bagby?
Aye.
All right, moving on to item number six, review and discuss request for funding for the Cloverdale Senior Multipurpose Center and Health Action Chapter.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, sir?
I was just saying, thank you, Paul.
Thank, thank you, Paul. Come back anytime.
Bye, Paul.
All right, we'll move on, item number six.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'll, I'll start and just like to.
And, oh, and sorry, and thank you, Hector, sorry.
Invite the Director of the Senior Center, Rebecca Ennis, maybe up to the podium, and if it's okay with you being here, Council, completion of line overview of the item tonight, and the questions you may have of staff, followed up with input from Senior Center Director, Rebecca Ennis. A little background, Senior Center, the Senior Center was granted a license to use the Cloverdale Multipurpose, Cloverdale Senior Multipurpose Center, or otherwise the Senior Center, located at 311 North Main Street, for initially a 12-year term that ended in March 2015. This is a, the existing facility is a city-owned facility. That agreement did have annual renewals thereafter, but the council did approve an amendment to that license agreement, which extended the term of the license agreement for another 15 years. So the Senior Center currently has the license agreement for use of the Senior Center facility through 2030. In addition to the license agreement, there is a use permit that has been approved by the Cloverdale Planning Commission that provides certain conditions of approval for use of the Senior Center, that also guide the number of events, hours of operation, as well as other planning standards relative to the use of the facility. In early 2019, Director Ennis did approach both the mayor and I, expressing some concerns about the financial standing of the Senior Center. At the time, we listened carefully and provided direction, our input to Director Ennis, that the recommendation would be to come back to our city council with a request to discuss the financial situation that is being experienced by the Senior Center, particularly given the concern that the current funding situation was not, was not sustainable for the continued operation. We know that the Cloverdale Senior Center does provide a valuable resource to our community in way of providing services and support to our senior community and ancillary support to our residents by some of the programs that are provided at the Senior Center. And likewise, it does serve as an important backup needed facility for city staff and city departments, you know, on an as needed basis. Director Ennis has always supported that. What's included in your packet is a response from Director Ennis outlining a funding request to support kind of two separate but related functions. First of which is funding that would assist with staffing at the Senior Center. I believe the request was kind of similar to a request, or similar to a funding model that is utilized by the city for the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce, and that is to provide support for, you know, continual staffing of the Senior Center. Included in the packet is an overview of, you know, the current budget, which was identified by, the senior's, you know, $45,000 for operation of Senior Center. And the funding request is for $10,000 annually for the next three years. It did indicate that, that this request represents about 22% of the operational budget annually for the Senior Center. And there is included in the packet some expense and revenue, I think for the last four or five years, that outlines kind of the financial health of the Senior Center. In addition to the funding request for the Senior Center, there's also a request for funding to support Health Action. Just by the way of background, Health Action is, is kind of an initiative that was really kind of started through the county, Sonoma County, and it continues to be supported by Sonoma County to provide resources and information around particularly healthy communities and, you know, housing and, you know, fitness for Sonoma County. It kind of derives, it kind of came out of Portrait of Sonoma County. And there's a lot of information on the website about the background and kind of the goal and initiatives. Initially, Health Action was kind of a standalone group of representatives that came together in Cloverdale to establish its own chapter here. And that, that group is kind of coalesced under Director Ennis's leadership, and she's kind of taken the mantle of serving as kind of the chair, if you will, of that, the local chapter, and preparing the agenda packets and, you know, putting together the materials, inviting the speakers. And I think part of that funding request that's included in your packet is to continue to support the action, Health Action, in Cloverdale. Obviously, the normal practice for city staff to bring these types of funding requests forward is to have it be kind of reviewed and vetted by a subcommittee, by on the heels of bringing forward the preliminary budget for next fiscal year, next week, budget workshop. We thought it was prudent to provide opportunity for Director Ennis to really speak directly to council and give staff some feedback on this particular funding request so we can address that as part of the budget workshop next week. And, you know, one of the things we recommend is you really do look carefully at the, the request itself, what are the goals that are served, but also what are some of, what might be some of your competing goals or competing objectives from a budget perspective that you may have. There are some other funding requests that are being brought forward that aren't necessarily outlined in your agenda report, but the staff wants you to be aware of. We do have the outstanding request by the History Center for, for funding. Just today, we see an updated funding request for next fiscal year for the Chamber of Commerce, in which they're going to be asking for some additional funding contributions for some of the things that they would like to provide to the community. And, you know, other service groups that have come forward in the past, and we expect council to support funding for, such as the Boys and Girls Club, that provides direct, you know, support services to the users, meaning, as you know, you passed the population tonight in support of that group. Other, other requests that we've funded in the past are such things as the, a reroute on this very building to help an important nonprofit organization, the Performing Arts Center, so.
But only 5,000 of the 36,000, cops, we raised the rest of them.
Absolutely. And I just, I did have a context.
That's just why we made sure everybody knew that.
In, in these discussions, they often, it can become very isolating in terms of how you look at these funding requests, and it just, as your city manager, I want to make sure you look at it in the context of the full budget and, you know, recognize that there are competition for the limited amount of funding that we have as a local and efficient city for these types of uses. But I don't want to underscore the importance of the services that are provided by the Senior Center and the need to sustain them within our, in our city. So with that said, I happen to entertain any questions that the council may have at this point, but otherwise, I think it would really be important to kind of hear more from their Senior Center Director about the nature of the requests and providing justification to the council for, for your support.
Great, thank you. Do you have any questions right now, or should we go ahead and hear from, hear from Becky?
Sure.
Great, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, so some logisticals, do I need to sign the notepad?
I think, what does the clerk say?
Just making sure. I do, okay, I will afterwards. Also, no fault of David's, but the packets, so I came for the subcommittee meeting that was supposed to happen, and it wasn't happening, and so consequently, I handed David some packets that were the complete packet that I wanted you all to receive tonight. And what I sent was actually a working document that I had on my computer. So there are a few pages that I'd just like to bring to your attention that should have not been in your agenda, but there in the, I don't know what your page numbers are, but there is a table of senior centers with municipalities throughout the county. And there are some pages after that. There are five pages that are actually all city council budget numbers and your City of Cloverdale goals for fiscal year 1819. So obviously, you guys know what those are. I don't need to remind you of them, and that was a working document. You really should have only received the municipality study with the table and not those. So I apologize for that. And also wanted to hand over to the clerk, just a nice year in review that actually I just presented last week to our annual membership meeting. And those pictures, I were not able to print at the time, I didn't do it in PowerPoint, I used Prezi, so I needed a little learning curve on that one, so. So again, thank you for your time. It's a lot easier to talk when you don't have three minutes, but I promise I won't be incredibly long because it's my daughter's birthday, so I'd like to actually spend some time with her today. I'd just like to kind of go back, it was 16 years ago next week that the Senior Center building was completed, and there was a presentation that was given. Some remarks were made by a gentleman named Kent Sherwood. I was not here at the time, but I'd just like to quickly read a little bit of what he said at that time. He said that "The day is here, and at the same time, we know that this is a transitionary day. A job that, a job done is a job begun. This new building, the generous gifts of money, the generous gifts of work and of time, all of these things and more have brought us to a fresh, clear morning of work, to the job that is never done but is always being done, to help older residents of Cloverdale and its surrounding area to maintain a successful, independent living. So now we shift our perspective to what lies ahead. The need for volunteers and their generous gifts of work and time will not shrink. The need for financial support from donors will not diminish. The jobs of planning, needs assessment, resource development, and program execution will grow more demanding and complex. But today, we have every right to celebrate. Congratulations, Cloverdale." And these remarks were made by a gentleman who I believe was on the board at the time and worked very closely in raising a large amount of money to build the building that we currently now live in. And I just wanted to share that with you because it seems obvious to me that even in 2003, there was some future thought about how the organization was going to operate and how more complex it was going to get, and because it is complex to run an organization. And so that's why I decided that, you know, to take my first year at the helm to research exactly what has been transpiring at the Senior Center. And there is some public opinion out there that there's been some mismanagement at the Senior Center, and I'd like to say that that is not the case. I think really what has transpired, in my opinion, over the years, is that it was a group of dedicated and passionate individuals that really just didn't have the opportunity or time to look out onto the horizon and figure out how to bring more money, more earned income into the center to combat the obvious increase in costs to operate a building and to operate programming, whether that be payroll or any other kind of overhead expense. And so I, I believe thoroughly that there was no mismanagement in the Senior Center, but that just simply no one was there to look 10 years ahead, 15 years ahead, 20 years ahead. And that's really what you need to have in order to run a successful business. So the Senior Center, just to highlight a little bit from what the overall purpose of the Senior Center is, is it's, it's a place for public education, resources, advocacy, opportunities for older adults. We have many classes there, many different kinds of programs. We have many classes there, many different kinds of programmings. We like to connect with other community members, so the Chamber is a good example, but also bringing in other linkages from outside of Cloverdale that might not be, you know, known to the residents of Cloverdale, maybe people from Petaluma, county level, other kinds of nonprofits, et cetera. So our idea is that we're going to be encouraging folks to come to Cloverdale, to provide their services at the senior center, to be available so that we can be kind of a hub for those kinds of things. For example, just yesterday, Mr. Kelly and I met with Brian Albee from Sonoma County Transit, and I encouraged him to have someone at the facility on a regular basis, whether it be quarterly or monthly, or just to come to our resource fair that we're having on June 8th to help people understand how to access transportation, how to use paratransit, how to sign up for paratransit. You know, there's a lot of things where people need a little bit more handholding and a little bit more one-on-one work that they are not going to get over the telephone. I have to say that it is sad when we have people come in and we have to listen to their stories and their needs and we direct them to places that are outside of Cloverdale or give them a phone number. And I have to always question whether or not they're going to be able to complete that transaction or complete finding the, in their journey of whatever it is that they need, if they're going to actually succeed in doing that because there isn't someone physically present here to be able to assist them with that. So the senior center is doing our best to be bringing in those kinds of organizations. And we do that already and we're going to continue to do that more. And just kind of speaking real quickly to the comparisons and all the budget constraints, you know, I realize that the pot of money of the city is not endless. But I would just like to share with you some of my own personal observations. The Chamber of Commerce is amazing organization and Nina has helped me, like David said, draft this kind of similar proposal because I do feel that the Chamber of Commerce does an excellent job in working to bring individuals into Cloverdale, focusing on the external and bringing in, you know, revenues, sales tax, whatever you want to call it. And yes, they do focus on the internal as well, working with the community garden and whatnot. But I really feel that the senior center is here for those that are already residents of Cloverdale. We're your community center, if you will, given that there is no real true recs and parks department in a sense, like I live in Santa Rosa. It's obviously not apples and apples, but I do think that we provide services that the city does not. And so I think it behooves the city at this point to look at supporting us more than just for the use of the building and some upkeep of the building, but to look at the programming and the things that we're already offering. And again, just thinking forward, and I highlighted it here, to the extent practical and ethical, our senior center will conduct or take part in research that advances knowledge about senior centers and about aging. Aging well, aging in place. And an example of that would be that next Tuesday, we're having a focus group. It's through the county, it's through the area aging, and they need to have a community assessment to understand how to plan for their next 20, 20 to 20, 24. So we want to be a part of that because we recognize that Cloverdale isn't always represented and at the table when the county comes to make these kinds of decisions. So yes, I think Mr. Kelly is correct. The scope of work and the budget requests are a lot to do with staffing and operations and the people, but it is truly the people that make the building and the programming run. And so that's why my requests are written as such.
Great, thank you. Does the council have any questions at this point? Any clarifying questions or open it up to the public?
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Becky, first, I just want to thank you for the wonderful job that you and your staff do over there at the senior center. I can't wait until I become old enough to join.
I know. I can't wait either, but I'm already a member.
So just a couple of questions. And I wish we had, I wish the city had enough money that we could just write out checks to all the nonprofits in our community that do such wonderful work, such as yourself. A couple of questions on the tax returns, and if you don't know the answers to that, to these questions, that's fine.
Okay.
You know, I'm just trying to get behind the numbers here, and I noticed on your 15, 16 tax returns, you had a total income of 137,000, and then 16, 17, you jumped to 294,000. And I see that there was, I think it was a one-time contribution by Joanne Ellinwood Trust, managed by Tom Sink.
Yes.
Is that a one-time or is that continuously?
No, it was one-time. It was completed, it was given in two portions. So we received a portion of that endowment upon death, and then there was another portion that came to us after her cat died.
Okay, so that was the last one you received.
Yes.
And then how about the Carol Chase Fund? Is Tom still managing that as well?
He does not manage it, but it is intact. I think some of the misperceptions that are out there is that we are tapping these endowments. These endowments are restricted. So the endowments are intact, they have the historical dollar amount that was given upon death. We are using the dividends that have been building off of the accounts.
Okay, and that's coming on a regular basis as well?
Yes.
Okay. And the last thing, I'm showing on the tax return rents, one year it was 9,000 and then the last year it was 13,000. I guess that must be other categories when you say rents?
Well, our Creative Notions store is rented, and so I can't speak to it directly, but my assumption is that rent went up.
What's being rented?
The Creative Notions store, the storefront that's on West First Street.
Okay.
That is being rented.
Okay. Yeah, that's basically all I had. I just want to try and get behind the numbers here. And the other thing, you know, Cloverdale is such a small community. I just want to make sure that we're not having programs that are being done by multiple different agencies. I know in a small town, we see that a lot, especially with the county social services. I know the Alexander Valley Health Clinic is doing some, and there's other organizations in town that are doing it. I just want to make sure that we're not, we're not, we don't have any.
Duplicative?
Any what?
Duplicative?
Yeah. Duplicate, thank you. Duplicate efforts to provide services, you know.
Sure.
I'd like to see them in one. Like I said, I wish I could just write you out a check, but I think we're just going to have to wait until we do the budget hearings. I think between now and then, I might be calling you with some additional questions.
Of course. Just to speak to your, the duplicated services, absolutely. I feel as if, you know, there needs to be a lot of clarity around Health Action. Yes, it was a county initiative, if you will, health equity, you have a vision of 2020, healthiest county that we have. But it is not a county government body, and so Health Action, you know, it's built around the idea of collective impact, that we're going to solve our own issues in our own communities with what we have. And so tapping into those strengths. So for me, not duplicating services, absolutely 110% agree with you. I think the other thing is allowing the folks that are coming to the table at Health Action to realize that, you know, everybody in their own different silos that might be doing something similar, we can make a better, I keep using the word impact, but that's the only one I'm coming up with right now, but we can make, we can do better with what we have and be more efficient with it if we actually all come together and say, okay, how are we going to pull this money to, or anything of that nature, money, resources, and pull it together to use it? So I don't see the senior center necessarily duplicating services. I think the fact that Health Action sits within the senior center to be the, the senior center being the fiscal sponsor gives Health Action a really good opportunity to go out and actually, you know, get grants and get funding to do things that maybe one sole organization wouldn't be able to do on their own.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Is there currently a dues collected for your members?
Yes.
I was just looking, and it's just a clarifying question. It's not meant to be, hold on, I got to get back to it.
Take your time.
Hold on, we're almost there. Where'd you go? This is it? Right after this, hold on. It was one year, it came down to about 2%, and I was just wondering if that was a drop in membership, the fiscal year 2016, 2017, if I'm reading this correctly, the membership dues collected that year were 2% of your budget. Did it become representative of 2% because of such a significant endowment that year where the regular membership dues didn't represent kind of where they were hovering in the 12% range that it seemed to be before that?
I, again, having only been in the position for a year, I can give you an educated guess. So, you know, our membership up until March 1st was $15 for an individual for an entire year.
Okay.
And we raised that as of March 1st to 25 for an individual and 45 for a household. So the 2% is low, I'm guessing, yes, because of the endowment. But I think there, again, there's also been various figures that have been out there that needed to get clarified of just exactly how much is membership contributing to the overall income of the center.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm really wanting to get down to what is earned income versus what is something coming in because someone passes away and lives as a gift.
Understandable.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I don't have many questions. I would just like to say that I'm very aware of how hard you guys work over there and what a good job you guys are doing. And I for one would like to see if we can fit this in the budget to fund these two requests.
All right. Well, this is not an action item tonight, but I am going to open it up to the public if anyone would like to come down and make a comment.
It's not the age that's causing me to do this, and not the older 20-year-old thing, but just in case I am, you know. Thank you. Thank you, first of all, very, very much for a lot of things. I'm always very impressed when I get a chance to take a look at our council in action and our staff. I get a little choked up. Couple of things I want to tell you. First, I am, if you don't know, the newest member of the senior center board of directors. That's not an easy decision because, you know, I want to keep busy, I want to make sure I'm doing something that's really worthwhile and at the same time that I can contribute something. I am so impressed with the senior center and with the staff and the board and the membership that it even surprises me. I didn't know it was this good. I thought it was good, I thought it had potential, but I didn't realize what a great foundation we have. It's very solid, people understand what they're doing, and there's a motivation here that is not just motivation, it's an understanding of what else we can do, what we are doing that has to be sustained. For example, I want to see us be able to expand, to have those extra days. I want us so much to be able to be available to people who need relief from the heat when it comes. Simple things that we can do, but things that cost money, but the return is tremendous. I will get choked up when I tell you how much Health Action has meant to me. I represented our city council for a number of years, not quite a decade, but I was an early participant in the beginning of Health Action, which is, came through the supervisors, but is really the business of the Department of Health. What I see, and I want, you have a very good question, Vice Mayor, about is this too governmental and, you know, are we going to get kind of, I don't know, a little rigid and a little like everybody else? What I love about Health Action and the reason I stayed all those years and the reason I was determined before either I was forced out of office or retired that somehow we'd get a chapter here, what I've seen over the years is that we affect the government. The membership of Health Action comes from a wide range in terms of the original group of people and the people who've come after us, who were called the Health Action Council. We're the ones originally who started building the idea with the Department of Health Services. Because of what all the members of Health Action, who are the greatest representation of a cross-section of everybody in this county, I've never worked on anything like this before, where you have everybody from a leading vintner to Kaiser to mental health facility, to schools, to major employers, who all understand that if we can get together as people and talk about what the needs are, individuals, families, employers, organizations, schools, and talk about the three areas that are of most importance. We're talking about, yes, physical health, but we're also talking about mental health. And my particular area of interest was financial help. That's how I view it, in terms of building careers, building businesses, having a firm economy, particularly for our younger people coming up. All of the activity, and I don't know how many of you have actually had a chance to get to a meeting of the Health Action Group, no longer called the council, just called Health Action, but if you go, gosh, it's not unusual to have 60 people there. I once counted, I think it was 100 at one point. And these are, as I say, a cross-section of people, and that's not necessarily just the folks on the dais. And the dais goes on for days, by the way, because we all like it and we all got involved with it. I'm rambling on, but I want to, I want to let you know how important that chapter has become because it does two things that I see of value right away, and I want to thank Rebecca Ennis because without her, it simply wouldn't have happened. I've tried with other people and it didn't work, but it worked with the senior center. And I also want to thank the late, for those of you who knew him, the late Rich Cowart and the wonderful board of the senior center who were working with him because he brought the idea of creating a chapter and they approved it. And it wasn't exactly what I wanted when it started, but we kept it going and then Rebecca came along and simply built it. And she did something else which she's very modest about. She also impressed the people who are at the core of the Health Action Group, and she's gotten to know people in the chapters and she's gotten to know people who make decisions. And so what's happened basically is that we've taken our place, which we have a right to and we should take, at the table, where not only are we exchanging information and giving help to one another, we're going back to our cities and we're bringing the information and we're also taking it to government. We take some of the findings, some of the things we understand that we need, and now we have something we can discuss as a group, a rather large and noisy group of people at the core, with our elected and our employed government folks. And I want to see it expand. The fact that Cloverdale is now a part of it has raised our, I guess, our vision there, where we are now a much more healthy part. Get to know some of the people, if you are interested, who are in chapters in places like Hillsburg, for example. I know Councilmember Cruz has worked with the folks down there and understands how successful they have become because they chose what was of interest, and that's the other thing I love about a chapter. You have a chance and an opportunity and you are encouraged to work with what is of interest to your city, your part of the county. You don't have to follow a formula. Yes, you get together with other people and you share ideas and you share problems and you share solutions, but you choose as a chapter through all of your members. And I've been very impressed at the cross-section that you have. It's just about anybody who's anybody who is supplying services. And I also want to thank our city staff and particularly recently Kevin Thompson for also coming to the meetings. As we progress, I think you'll be very delighted with what is produced. And last but not least, I do want to urge you as much as it is humanly possible, and boy, I understand what it's like to be a council member and have to make decisions about money and to whom you give it. And to be blunt, the best way to do it is to give money where you know you're going to get results, where the taxpayers are going to get results, where something is actually going to be produced that will make a difference in their lives. And you can't get closer than that than something like the senior center. So thank you for listening to me rage on and on. You know how I get? Luckily, I'm down here and you can shut me up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And for the record and for our new clerk and for everyone, it was former mayor, former vice mayor, councilmember extraordinary, Carol Russell. Would anyone else in the public like to come forward?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council, city staff, Sergeant Parker. I too just wanted to take a minute and ask you to consider supporting this. The senior center is by far our most instrumental service for our senior community, which of course is by far probably our most important group of folks here in town. But I think Ms. Ennis is right in when she refers to it often as a community center. There's a lot going on there, from the produce market on Fridays where you get a, there's a lot of folks there that aren't seniors. They offer memberships to folks who aren't seniors. They have discounted lunches for members. Working through the Senior Center, we've helped organize bus passes for folks that needed help. Helped orchestrate food when it was extra to get to the homeless. The pancake breakfast. I mean, the examples of what a great organization they are are endless. It really has, I think, evolved more into a community center. And I certainly think it's worth supporting. So, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to come forward and speak on this item? I'll try not to embarrass Melanie, who just walked in. Okay. Oh, please, yeah, please do come down and state your name for the record, please.
I'm Joanne Argeris, a longtime resident.
Oh, and can you speak into the mic for the people?
I'm Joanne Argeris, a longtime resident of Cloverdale. And I have seen, I'm a member of the Senior Center and I come to many of its activities. It has a wide range of activities, from literary luncheons to teas, to Spanish classes, to line dance classes, to yoga. So, it does provide what it's supposed to be doing. That is, a wonderful place for seniors to go and to participate and feel that they can contribute something. Now, that is a real important aspect of this center. They want to be able to contribute something. Just because we have gotten old and feeble and forget things here and there does not mean we still can't do lots of things. We just can't do them 40 hours a week, like probably you all have to do, or 60. And it's sort of a jewel of Cloverdale, is the way I've always viewed it. So, I really think that you might want to contribute some money to keep this jewel alive. Other places, some of them don't need any city money for some reason I don't understand. But, you know, Santa Rosa does theirs through the parks and recreation. In other words, it's totally funded by the city. Hillsburg is 95% funded by the city. So, it does seem that we should be making some sort of contribution to something that is really a wonderful experience for anybody that goes there. So, please keep that in mind. And I do hope we will still keep the Senior Center aspect of it paramount in our minds and not let us get distracted by other entities. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one more comment.
Finish up with the public first, is that okay? Okay. Would anyone else from the public like to come forward? All right, well, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council and we're not taking any action tonight, but, yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment that recently, a friend of mine who is retired, incredibly reclusive, never came out. But we started talking about the Senior Center, she's a neighbor. And first thing she did was balancing. It was a class for balance, because she was having trouble physically. And then, once she got there and worked on that, now she's taking sign language classes. I said, you, what the hell, you're doing that? What? She said, I just, she said, it's just been really fun to be in the group. And she said, I'm gonna learn something new next. She said, it keeps my brain going. But it was just, that's the kinda stuff that I just eat up. I think that's just wonderful. Thank you. But sign language? I think it's great.
Any other comments?
I'm fine.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for coming tonight and on your daughter's birthday. And that it was, that you were the second big item, so I'm sorry about that. But we didn't, we didn't know. But I think it was important to have this at a full council meeting and have the public discussion and have people come, because we'll take this information and then we'll move on to, we have it and then we'll move on to the budget meeting, which I'm assuming you'll be able to join.
Well, yes, I'm hoping that someone will come in when you.
We promised not to change the date either, so. Actually, that's a good time to announce that, if you would, Mr. City Manager.
Absolutely, thank you, Mayor. The, there's a bunch of workshops scheduled for Tuesday, May 14th, from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Cloverdale Fire Station. It'll be pretty much an all-day workshop. Scheduled as a special meeting of the City Council to review, determine a draft fiscal year 1920 budget. The budget includes the general fund, but it also includes the enterprise funds for sewer and water and the airport. And we'll spend the day working through that budget so that we can receive council feedback on any specific initiatives. And that'll be an opportunity for council to weigh in on this funding request along with other funding requests by the organizations.
Great, thank you. And hopefully you'll be able to be there? Okay, great. And I'll, does anyone else have any other questions or comments at this time? And we'll continue this item to the, to the budget workshop. And then you can go to dinner with your daughter, so.
Dessert by now?
Oh, dessert by now, I know, sorry. Wish her a happy birthday. Thank you very much. All right. All right, well, with that, we will move on. Does anybody need a break? Or you don't have a, or we're in the, we're in the.
We're almost done.
We're in the homestretch, okay. So, we'll move on to, exactly, discuss and provide direction to me on appointment actions for the City Select Committee. The answer?
Thank you, Mayor. The Sonoma County City Selection Committee received a letter from President Pro Tem of the Senate Rules Committee requesting nominations for appointment to the California Coastal Commission North Coast Representative. There is a very strict timeline to submit nominations. And as such, the City Selection Committee is scheduled to meet on next Wednesday, May 15th, at 3:00, 3:00 p.m. in Rutter Park. And the, the City Select Committee Secretary did send out a request for nominations. There was one letter of interest received by the councilmember Deborah Fudge from Windsor. And what we're asking for at this point in time is for council to provide direction to Mayor Bagby to weigh in at the City Selection Committee on May 15th in terms of those particular appointments of the City Selection Committee.
Actually, before we discuss it, would anyone from the public like to come forward and make a comment on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm just gonna bring it back to the council, because we have one letter.
It's Deb.
It's Deb. Well, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I'd like to say, seeing how we only have one letter.
Yeah.
Plus, plus, I think Deborah is very qualified, so it's not that she's the only candidate. But as always, Madam Mayor, I'd like to give you the latitude to make changes at the table as you see fit. Let's read.
Well, on this, I have to say, I'm really disappointed because this, and I'm disappointed in Deb, because this letter doesn't even begin to approach how qualified she is for this.
We all agree. We all agree.
It's so, it is so Deb, because it's so humble and it's so, well, you know, and the fact is, is that she is imminently qualified for this. And I really, I think she's such a strong candidate and she sure as heck better be selected. That's, that's what I have to say. So, I'm glad that the council's on the same page. So, actually, do we need to take a vote on this, Maria? No? Okay, so I think I've received direction and. And I'm gonna get to that, too. And I probably should've done this earlier, actually. I was gonna ask the city manager to introduce our new city clerk.
Okay, I can do so.
Before, I write it right as soon as everybody left, unfortunately, but.
I'm really delighted and excited to introduce Maria McCarthy as our interim city clerk. Maria has a long history of working as a city clerk for our neighborhood city, the city of Hillsburg. Luckily for us, she retired over six months ago and was able to.
That's been really long.
Join the workforce. And in the short period of time that she has been on board with us, she has already really taken a look at our processes and made a number of recommendations for improvement based on her significant experience working as a, as a city clerk in Hillsburg. And I am already working with Maria on development of the job description for hopefully what will be our next very successful city clerk. And it's just been really delightful to work with someone with such a long history and experience as being a city clerk. And it's just been, it's been really wonderful to have someone with her background. One thing Maria did express to me is, you know, after her long career, long night meetings, that she's made certain personal promises not to work a lot of night meetings. So, you'll probably won't see Maria attending a lot of council meetings. We will have our deputy city clerk participating. But behind the scenes and directing the actions in the city clerk's office will be Maria until such time we're able to recruit and select our next city clerk. So, I'm really, really excited to have Maria on our team. And you'll start seeing some subtle changes in some of the resolutions and some of the agendas and ordinances that kind of will reflect really the best practices of the city clerk office.
Great, great. Welcome. And just earlier tonight, we saw, oh, yes, absolutely. Okay, thank you. Earlier tonight, we saw, we heard a little bit of the scheduling snafu that happened around the police, finance and administration meeting. And it was because we were between clerks. And so, you could not have come along soon enough, so.
We're happy to be here and I hope I can really contribute and get you as a really a superb city clerk.
You've already, you've already started. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I've already been able to work with you on sorting out my compliance and it's been a pleasure already. So, thank you very much for being here.
And in the spirit of not having a late council meeting for our supposedly retired clerk, we're gonna move on to subcommittee items. And there, seeing none, we will move on to.
Actually, I do have one thing, sorry.
You do have one thing, yes.
I was asked at the last city council meeting to report back during this item of the first ad hoc committee, committee meeting that we had for the Revered Mulch. It was held on April the 24th? Yes. It was held on April the 24th. And we got an idea of the scope and just are looking at moving forward with how to address it. And as far as Marta Cruz's request to have an idea of a timeframe, I believe six months will be something that we could have something actionable.
Oh, right, thank you. Any questions?
Me?
Those two.
You two?
Yeah, great, thank you. All right. Moving on to subcommittee reports, the first one is Airport. Our next meeting is June 4th. Finance Administration and Police, our next meeting is Thursday, May 23rd.
Planning and Community Development, our next meeting is Tuesday, June 18th. It'll be 3:00 p.m., it's at 4:00 p.m. at City Hall Conference Room. If we can make a correction on that, please. And the Public Works, the next meeting will be Tuesday, May the 28th at 4:00 p.m. at City Hall Conference Room.
Okay. Fire? Is that Marta?
Yep.
Okay, so like, her next meeting is June 10th and I believe she's school board as well and that's May 20th. Okay, councilmember reports?
I submitted mine in writing, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember?
I'm good.
Okay. I submitted mine in writing as well. Legislative report.
No legislative report, Mayor.
Hang on, all right. City manager, city attorney report. Do we want to, do we want to announce our event on Saturday?
Absolutely. We are planning the Porterfield Creek Open Space Preserve grand opening on Saturday, starting at 10:00 o'clock at the Trailhead, located at the Westerling End of Skyview Drive. There will be refreshments served, some speeches by the mayor. We have invited Supervisor Corr, he has a competing meeting to attend, but hopefully we'll see him present for a brief few moments. There will be also representatives from Sonoma County Avenue Open Space present. And I know there's a lot of volunteers and residents within the Clover Springs community that will be present. Following, following kind of speeches and introductions, we'll plan to do a brief hike.
Or a hike of length of your choice.
There's a number of opportunities to get exercise within the open space that are from range from short to long. And it's somewhat very difficult, but otherwise, you're encouraged and welcome and I hope to see you there. And I think it will be a nice grand opening of what is gonna be, in what is really a very special resource for our community.
My son and I are kind of the ball of energy, we'll be there.
We'll just get, I'll be sure to give him a dough hat.
Yeah, just send him up the hill.
On the same day, a little bit overlapping, but it'll last, should last a little bit longer, is the open house for the Cloverdale Airport. The Young Eagles will be providing free airplane rides to any young children that would like to come out to the airport. It's a little, it's kinda planned as a little bit of a smaller event this year. As you know, we did have a flood event there and there was a lot of clean action that happened. But it's still a little bit kind of recognized as a resource setting up.
You know, Madam Mayor, with respect to the Porterfield Creek Open Space opening, you know, I can't help but thinking back to when our former councilmember, Bob Jen, talked to the developer who was gonna do the Del Webb Phase 3 and build houses on that ridge and behind it. And he got together with the open space district and it was his hard work that got that land put into open space. So, you know, it would be nice if somehow we mentioned Bob Jen at that event on Saturday, because, and you can, give him a call. I'm sure he's got a few words to say if you wanna work him into that.
He'd probably like it.
He's probably watching.
Yeah.
Hi, Bob.
But he needs to be thanked for that. He spearheaded that.
I'll message him.
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll be great.
Is this, no?
This Saturday at?
Saturday at 10:00, right?
10:00, yep.
Buckle up.
Anything else from the city manager or city attorney? All right, seeing none, all right. Is there any council direction on future agenda items? Anyone? All right. Well, seeing none, then we will adjourn to a regular meeting of the City Council on Wednesday, May 22nd. Good night, everyone.